We do have a quorum. Start with a roll call. Woody Chidick?
Aye, I hear.
Lee Darst?
Aye.
Mike Dickey?
Aye.
Charlie Higgins? Not yet. Dave McMorris here, Matt Watkins.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, first order of business tonight is a continued hearing on eighty-two Border Street. So Julia, can you bring our applicants forward?
Yes.
Is everyone here?
Chair McMorris, this is Adam Brodsky. May I proceed, please?
You may.
Evening and happy New Year. Uh, my name is Adam Brodsky and I represent the applicant Co Lobster LLC and we have a smaller crew with us this evening. You know, Eamon Omara, our project manager, as well as Susan Holdley and Karina Martinez, our project architects. Our last public hearing was on December three. And at that time, I believe that we had substantively addressed the ZBA's concerns. But there were few housekeeping matters that we needed to provide, which we did so on December tenth. Uh, first, we fixed sheet AS one oh four. Uh, to accurately locate the roof overhang for the new building. Uh, one of the members had indicated that the plan showed it encroaching slightly into the setback. Um, second, we added the lower floor gross footage for the new building. To sheet CAZBA, which provided the facade and building volume calculations. Um, and we also, or I should say, Ms. Holden, Ms. Martinez provided a memo confirming the facade and building volume calculations for the gatehouse. We had discussed all of these issues on December three, and those were housekeeping items that we were tasked with. Um, Susan and Karina are available if you have any questions regarding that information. Uh, Ms. Gillis was kind enough to provide us with a draft decision. And I proposed some minor edits, but had no substantive concerns regarding the draft. And so we're happy again to answer any questions you may have and, uh, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you for the additional material. Um, Woody's been coordinating our review of this project, so I'm gonna ask him to see if there's any questions remaining or what your thoughts about Woody.
Okay, I don't want to preclude any members of the board from, uh, amplifying or even, um, uh, disagreeing with anything I have to say, but I have to thank Attorney Brodsky and, uh, and the Karina, uh, Holy team for what I consider answering all the issues I raised. Um, most of which were valid. A couple I've raised, I retracted. Um, and I will admit, but I, I could see nothing here that would give me pause for concern. Um, and, and Adam is right, the, the minor changes are primarily, uh, uh, kind of title or, uh, changes, if you will, of, of, uh, memos or issues, not, not substantive at all. Um, so I, I think they, uh, uh, addressed any concern I might have, uh, had. Um, I, I will kind of editorially say that this really, uh, what I'm about to say doesn't apply to this project, but I wish the zoning bylaw, um, changes over the last couple of years had, had, um, more thoroughly addressed the issue of global warming, uh, um, the need to raise buildings, uh, structures, all of which are, are valid, uh, but we don't really have any guidelines going forward, but that doesn't apply to, to eighty-two Border Street. It's, it's really, uh, a, a wish in the future that we had, uh, better guidance, but in this case, I, I think they addressed everything, uh, before us, uh. There were some issues not before us, but, um, I'm not gonna get into that.
I do think, um, it is fortunate in this instance that the buildings that we're dealing with were already non-conforming as to height. Um, because I think we will run into a dilemma when we have applicants who have conforming buildings that need to be raised to non-conforming heights. And hopefully we'll planning board will look at that and we'll get some thoughts on it over the next couple of years. Uh, anyone else on the board have any questions or comments or thoughts? No? Okay, let's see if anyone in the audience would like to address things. Raise a question, comment?
Fran Collins has a question.
Okay.
Um, promoting them two panelists as well as George McGoldrick next.
Great, thank you. All right, let's, um, there we go. Hi, Mr. Collins. Good to see you again.
Awesome. Uh, good evening, everybody. I've, uh, I've been at several of these meetings, as you may recall. Uh, I, I don't profess to be an expert in zoning or an expert in planning. But I do know we have zoning regulations in town to basically to protect the town from unnecessary or harmful developments. And generally it works, um, this piece of property is waterfront dependent use zoned. And it, it just, I'm sorry, I uh, maybe it's my old age, it may be that I'm just kind of seeing things correctly, but I just can't see how building a boutique hotel in whatever you want to call it on a waterfront dependent use piece of property smacks of waterfront dependent use. It just does not. So I don't know which way you folks are gonna go tonight. Um, I suspect I do, but, uh, um, I think it's a tragedy that this last piece of commercial waterfront dependent property is gonna be put into a, a eight or a nine room hotel, which I, if it goes, I wish you all the best luck in the world, but I can't see that it succeeds. I don't know what we're gonna put in there in January or in February, but, uh, um, here we are. Um, we're trying to protect the town and keep some little bit of its, of its character and nature and this certainly smacks of, of out of control development. So that, that is my comment, and I hope that you, uh, take it to heart and let's, let's, let's hope that your decision um, is in the best interest of the town. I know you're constrained by the rules and regulations, but, uh, we'll see what you can do. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And Mr. McGoldrick?
Uh, good evening, George McGoldrick, one oh seven Border Street. But also, um, owner of seventy Border Street or Director Butter. Uh, I'm, I'm just looking through some of the responses to the board regarding the transit use, transit lodging accommodations and licensed hotel. Uh, and the first meeting when these, uh, this group proposed this, I was very much in favor of a hotel. Uh, as you know, I'm one of the partners in the Red Line Inn. We'd love to see another hotel in town to accommodate all the people that we have coming into town. But unfortunately, over the last year and a half, one of the project managers has been walking around telling people that the only way this works is as long-term rental. So I'm looking at uh, whether or not the board can restrict uh, the applicant to do what they're saying they're gonna do now, which is a hotel and not do long-term rentals. Again, this is a potential uh, consequence, an unintended consequence that we don't want to approve this as a hotel, and then they come back in the year and say, well, it doesn't really work as a hotel. We're gonna do these, you know, year-long leases. And now you're just benefiting eight people as, rather than serving the town. Um, so can the board please address the whole issue about long-term rentals versus hotel versus what the board is able to do under the special permit? Because as I said, it's a very different use as long-term rentals, basically condominium as rented versus transit lodging hotel use is what we would support. We would not support long-term rentals and can the board through the special permit make that distinction?
Yeah, I, I think I, I do understand your concern. We have discussed this at earlier hearings and my understanding is that that general perception or conception of transit uses no more than thirty day period.
Is that? Is that defined or is that a guess?
Again, I believe it's defined, it's not defined, but I believe there is some, um, land use law that suggests that.
But Dave, I might be able to help on this too. Uh, in the building code, they'll apply for a use group as transient. Uh, and that is defined through the building code for, uh, no more than thirty days. Uh, so that will be part of the building permit. If they exceed that, they'll have to come back uh, to the, because of the different use, they'll have to come back to the zoning board to ask for that permission. So if that, if that helps.
And, and Dave, if I could inter- interject a little bit. Rather than, uh, it's been our practice, and I think it's a good practice, rather than, um, right into a decision, uh, speculate on what might happen and say, you, you can't do this, uh, you know? If, if, if you do this, it's not gonna be allowed. It's clearer to say that, uh, what is allowed, as John said, is a, is transient usage for thirty days, and after that, uh, it's difficult to speculate here. Um, but they would need a different relief from this board. Rather than, than, than try to, uh, project out.
Yeah, the special permit is for the use that was applied for. Yeah. Applied for use, transient use.
And then is the, I'm sorry, is the, then the, the building inspector as the zoning officer, is he the one that will police this?
Yes.
Uh, again, I'm just as a crazy notion, somebody wants to rent it for a year. As, as Mr. Collins mentioned, it's obviously maybe difficult to lease the units in the wintertime. Um, and so Jane Smith comes in and rents it for January, then Jim Smith rents it for February, then Jane Smith rents it for March. So who polices this to ensure that it is really a transient use, real, is really a hotel?
Uh, that will be done in a couple of matters. One, through the building um, permit, uh, and two, through the annual occupancy. Uh, so again, if there is a change of use or there's records indicating that people have been there longer than thirty days, that we, you know, we'd be able to, to look at that and then enforce it at that time. So there are kind of two, two places where it's looked at, again, annual inspections and, uh, through the permit process as well.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Helen. Can, since the project manager is on this Zoom, can we just get him to acknowledge this?
Well, Mr. Chair McMorris.
Let's go back to Mr. Brodsky.
Uh, uh, again, I, I, I'm not sure it's fair to have concerned citizens effectively cross-examining my client and its agents. I think the issue is spelled out. Um, while transient is not defined in the Cohasset bylaw, when there is no definition, it defaults to the definitions in the Massachusetts Building Code. And as Mr. Helen indicated, um, it's spelled out in the, the code. And if there's an enforcement issue, uh, the building commissioner will address it in the context of enforcement.
And, and again, just to be clear, so you agree it's thirty days of what's spelled out in the Mass Code?
Uh, 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 again, I mean, I want to be respectful, Mr. Goldrick. I also am not here to answer any questions. I mean, that's, that, that's what, that's what the regulations require. And we have to comply with all law.
Again, we, we're just trying, we're just trying not to have unintended consequences.
Right.
So in a year from now, we find out that we were misspoken or the Mass Law is not exactly what it says. So, you know, again, a hundred percent uh, backing if this is a hotel, zero percent backing if it's anything different. And as in a butter, we have rights, so hopefully I'm just trying to get the applicant to agree to what the board has just said. I don't think it's a big ask.
The applicant has applied for a special permit for transient lodging accommodations pursuant to the Cohasset zoning code, which, uh, incorporates uh, where there is no definition, any definitions in the Massachusetts Building Code.
And we also have the authority to condition our decision, so.
That's what, that's what I was looking for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Yeah, cause Dave, the definition transient lodging accommodation says the letting of rooms for transient occupancy in a licensed hotel motel or inn, so that could tell you they have to be licensed, but it doesn't speak to the duration, so we could look at that, I think, you know?
Yeah, I think it, it's probably wise to be more specific in the, in the conditions.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, any, anyone else have any comments, anything you want to add?
Uh, yeah, Dave, just one quickie. Um, I, I thank, uh, Mr. McGoldrick for bringing the issue up. While it's not before us, uh, he certainly alerted us as a board to a potential issue that may not ever materialize, but, uh, we will not be, um, ignorant of or immune to, uh, changes in use.
It's certainly been a concern that's been voiced by several of the citizens who've talked about this during the course of the hearings. Uh, anyone else?
They're just, yeah, just a follow-up. And, and again, the building code spells it up pretty clearly, um, in stating that, uh, occupancy of a dwelling unit or a sleeping unit for not more than thirty days, transient. So that, that it's right, it's right in the definition, so it, it's pretty clear.
Okay, great. Thank you, John. All right, anyone else have anything they wish to discuss? All right, um, I know we have a draft decision on this. So I'd like to just get the sense of the board whether we believe the draft is in close enough shape that we can close the hearing, or should we continue and wrap it up next time? What do you think, Matt?
I think it's in a good enough spot that we could close the hearing.
Okay, Woody?
Yeah, um, I agree. Maybe I would, uh, simply insert the phrase um, under conditions, two copies of it. Oh, I'm sorry, um, um, the phrase that, uh,
That's, that's part of
This has to comply with, uh, uh, the latest material submitted to the board. We've had a
That's, I think that's, that's an issue for deliberation.
Okay, uh, sorry. Okay, okay.
I mean, it's
Yeah, no, I, I agree. We have an up in front of us, I think.
Mike, you think so too?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
Okay, then, uh, Woody, you want to make a motion on this?
Make a motion to, uh, uh, close the hearing.
Okay.
For deliberations.
Then moved and seconded that we close the hearing on eighty-two Border Street. Those in favor of Woody Chidick?
Aye.
Lee Darst?
Aye.
Mike Dickey?
Aye.
Dave McMorris, aye, Matt Watkins.
Aye.
All right, let's move on to our next
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to also say I appreciate the board's work on, it was a very complicated project. And getting into the weeds was very helpful. I agree with Woody. I wanted to thank our team who's really best in class. Adam, of course, who you're familiar with, is, is the really, this is the phenomenal lawyer. Merrill, who worked through the sort of spaghetti of the details of the site. We spent a lot of time. And Susan and Karina, who are really the finest architects in Cohasset, and I just really appreciate the team. Thank you for working with us.
It's like watching the Oscars.
Thank you.
All right, um, let's move on. Our next application is the Schiavo, Schiavo Family Trust, one forty-seven South Main Street to modify a special permit. And Adam, I know that you are all right, leader on this one again.
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair McMorris. You're going to be sick of me by the end of this evening.
Not a chance, not a chance.
I'm gonna hop off at this time.
Okay. Um, Lee, you're hopping off like permanently?
Or just this hearing?
She was recused.
Just this hearing.
She's recused. Okay, great. All right.
And, and thank you again. Very briefly, I represent the Schiavo Family Trust. John Schiavo is the trustee of the trust. And we have also here this evening Kerry Kip, who's the manager of Minus Candle Company, Inc., uh, the proposed tenant. Again, we last met on December three. Um, we were requested at that time to provide a list of proposed conditions, which we provided on December five. Uh, and again, staff was kind enough to provide us with a draft decision which incorporated those proposed conditions, which I understand that the board hasn't weighed in on. Uh, we have no substantive concerns regarding the draft decision. And again, we're also available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Um, actually, I guess we don't, don't have anyone coordinating this one, but Mike, Dickey, do you want to lead this off?
Um, I, I, I looked at the materials. I, I really don't have any, any questions or concerns.
Great. Matt?
Yeah, I was comfortable with, um, the conditions in the hearing as well. Um, I think that it's clear enough in the decision in a couple of different areas, um, that would lead you to obviously assume that if if there was a tenant turnover down the road, then that wouldn't kind of keep the door open for retail use. Um, just, you can kind of see that in a number of areas in the decision, but I don't know if we should consider as a condition, almost like, you know, if the, if there is a tenant changeover, that maybe the board would be, uh, alerted to that in writing or something along those lines, but, um, I was comfortable with all the other conditions. And I, again, I thought it was pretty clear that this was for a candle making shop and, you know, it even the application was for that, but we would, I guess, just want to know if it somehow changed in, in use down the road, and I wouldn't want someone to assume that, um, some use was allowed there without checking back with the board.
Okay, I mean, I would expect that this special permit would be transferable from this special permit goes with the property. So if the business owner sold the business and it was the same business being operated, I'd expect special permit would still be operable. If it was a different business, they'd have to come back.
Um, Dave, just maybe one other more of a little technical follow-up, but I, I, I think we, we are talking about three units, and I, I think that's defined in there as, uh, so the, um, retail use is that in one specific unit or all three units? Uh, it just maybe we can, uh, have the applicant reapply for a building permit for the change of use, so we can address it in that manner, an issue of occupancy too, so they could use the building. But just more of a technical manner, just to kind of, just so I know where the retail use is, whether it's the whole first floor or a, a certain unit on the first floor, if that, if that's helpful rather than confusing.
Okay, can you address that, Adam?
I'm gonna ask that question of, uh, Mr. Schiavo. I lost track of the unit numbers which have changed or to Miss Kip.
Yeah, so that'll be unit one oh one and one oh two is a retail space, which faces South Main Street. The other unit faces Spring Street.
Okay. Any other questions?
I've got one, Dave. Yep, in the past, uh, uh, we have, and I can't remember how we've structured this entirely, but, uh, a de minimis change in use. If the building inspector were to come to us and say, this, uh, uh, use number two is very consistent with your decision, we could, uh, meet without the need for the, for any applicant to hire lawyers and all that sort of stuff. If we felt that it was more substantive, uh, yeah, a new he- hearing would occur, but I would like to leave it up to the building inspector and the judgment of the board to decide this is a, uh, you know, a, a, a consistent change in use as opposed to a radical change in use. And I don't know how we've structured that, and maybe we've just done that as a matter of, uh, of, uh, policy as opposed to decision-making.
Yeah, um, I mean, we, we had a fairly narrowly conditioned use in the first special permit.
Yeah.
And we're modifying that, taking a step away from that now. I am mindful of the fact that the neighbors were very concerned about what um, went into these, these, uh, commercial bases. And I think it I think it would be wise if use was going to change further and not revert back to the professional offices, that it would have to come back to us.
Okay, right, I, I, I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay. Um, anyone else have anything they want to add? Questions, comments? All right, seeing none, I move that we close the hearing on one forty-seven South Main Street.
Second.
Moving seconded to close the hearing. Woody Chidick?
Aye.
Mike Dickey?
Aye.
Dave McMorris, aye, Matt Watkins.
Aye.
All right. Uh, next is a new application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too. Uh, next item of business is a new application for a use variance and dimensional variance on one forty-nine King Street. This is, there's an existing structure on the property. And this is an, I guess this is a very unusual issue, uh, in that this is a use and a dimension that was permitted under the pre, under the zoning bylaw until last year. Um, there was an application that was in process, uh, for the planning board at least. Um, before the change in the zoning, but the zoning has changed, this particular use and the building are, are no longer allowed in this zoning district. Thus, the application for a use and dimension variance. Is that a fair summary, Adam?
Yes, Chairman Morris, I'm prepared to go into it with your permission and a little bit more.
I expected you might, so go right ahead.
Oh, well, well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Adam Brodsky and
Just for the record, uh, Lee Darst is back with us.
Thank you. And, and may I ask, uh, Mr. Higgins is, uh, not attending this evening, is something going to be taking his spot on the board, the three-member board?
Um, well, Mr. Higgins can, can make up this hearing.
Okay, thank you.
At this point, no.
Thank you. Uh, uh, good evening, and I represent PSI Atlantic Acquisitions, room and number eight LLC, which I'll refer to as PSI. Uh, Jesse Morgan is the senior vice president with PSI. I don't know whether he wishes to be promoted, but I wanted Ms. Gillis to, uh, know that he's in the audience. Uh, Dan Ketches is our registered professional engineer with VHB and Jan Bryan, our architect with Michael Parker Studios. And as Chair McMorris indicated, PSI is seeking a use variance under, I call it the, the new table of principal use regulations, it's section three hundred four point two D, to construct a new seventy-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-eight square foot self-storage facility at one forty-nine King Street, which was previously approved by site plan approval by the planning board and the grant of a stormwater permit by the Conservation Commission. And they're also seeking a dimensional variance from the new table of dimensional requirements, three hundred dash five point three, uh, to allow the project, uh, which uh, which uh, 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 under the new zoning exceeds the maximum building height within the new three A zoning district. And I'll I'll try to be brief. It's just a long, complicated story, but I'll try and explain to you how we got here. And then I'll ask Dan to do a concise presentation of the property and the project from a technical perspective. Uh, you're likely familiar with the property. Um, it is uh, steep, um, altered with frontage on King Street, and it's adjacent to the new proposed public safety building. And you'll note that there's a forty five foot elevation change from King Street to the rear of the lot. And King Street obviously is a state highway. It was historically used for automotive repair. Um, but there's presently a wireless communication facility at the rear of the property. Um, the site's been underutilized for decades on account of the steep topography and the access issues to and from King Street. Um, self-storage is uh, really an ideal use for the property because the project can be constructed on the steep topography, requires minimal parking, and importantly, would add minimal traffic to the already busy state highway. While the property also lacks sewer and requires an onsite septic system, uh, which uh, given, given the soil conditions and the site conditions, uh, would preclude other similarly sized commercial uses, which would have a greater demand for onsite septic. As Chairman Morris indicated, the site was formerly zoned technology business and self-storage was and allowed use within the TB zoning district. As such, we only required site plan approval from the planning board, a stormwater permit from the Conservation Commission, and ultimately a building permit from the Building Department. Uh, we began consulting with the town regarding this project in uh, it was November of twenty twenty three. And then in reliance upon those consultations, filed an application for approval of the site plan with the planning board on March twenty 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 four. Shortly thereafter, on March twenty nine, we filed an application for our stormwater permit. The planning board conducted three public hearings and on June five closed the public hearing and voted to grant the site plan approval with conditions. Um, uh, you should know that the proposed building at that time conformed to the dimensional requirements within the TB district, which had a maximum building height of forty five feet. Uh, the approved building has a height of thirty eight point three seven feet, um, as confirmed by the Building Department. During the course of the planning board public hearings, we were specifically asked to provide a letter confirming that self-storage was allowed as a matter of right within the TB district, the technology business, which we provided. Um, simultaneously, the Conservation Commission conducted two public hearings and on May twenty three, the Conservation Commission closed the public hearing and voted to grant our stormwater permit. Thereafter, in reliance upon those approvals, PSI spent a great deal of money developing construction plans, which were submitted with our building permit application on September twenty 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 four. Um, however, as Mr. Howland will confirm, he cannot issue a building permit for the project because we've come to learn that at annual town meeting on June three, the town meeting voted to uh, consolidate the highway business, the technology business and the light industry zoning districts to create that new three A commercial zoning district, the three A C zoning district. That article also adopted the uses and dimensional requirements of the highway business district. And uh, as a result, the consolidation of the zoning districts eliminated self-storage as an allowed use within the new three A C district. Um, uh, uh, self-storage is not allowed, uh, was not allowed in the highway business district and therefore is not allowed in the new three A C district. And also, uh, the maximum building height in the highway business district is thirty five feet. And again, the consolidation of these districts changed the maximum building height, which we designed to from forty five feet to thirty five feet. Um. We 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 also come to learn that on the same day that we had filed our site plan approval application, that the planning board had published the first notice of its public hearing to consider the warrant article article to consolidate the zoning districts. However, it was not obvious from the legal ad that the consolidation eliminated self-storage use within that new consolidated district.
Adam, what was the date of that first notice?
The same date that we filed our application, which I believe was March twenty. By coincidence, I should note, um, the planning board conducted a public hearing on the warrant article on April three, and the agenda described the amendment is simply a reorganization of the zoning bylaw. Um, I've reviewed the minutes as well as listened to the recording of that April three public hearing, and they do not reflect any discussion of the elimination of any uses or in particular, the elimination of self-storage in the new zoning district. Um, at that meeting, the planning board voted to recommend favorable action on the article to consolidate the districts. A town meeting was conducted on June three. Um, the informational summary for the particular article that consolidated the zoning districts simply indicated that the article was intended to clean up and simplify commercial zoning. I also reviewed the recording of the town meeting and confirmed that there was no discussion of elimination of any uses or specifically self-storage within the new consolidated zoning district. And that article did pass at town meeting with uh, little to no discussion. Now, as you can see, reviewing approval of the article which consolidated the zoning districts occurred at the same time that we were in front of the planning board and the Conservation Commission, which were reviewing the project. Again, we have no interest in pointing fingers at anyone, including ourselves here. Uh, we're not casting any blame. Uh, uh, everyone throughout this process um, has has acted in good faith, and the extensive review process that we went through resulted in a better project. Um, however, you know, we were not given any alert that there could be a potential problem um, with self-storage or building height as a result of the zoning article. Uh, the zoning bylaws, section three hundred twelve point six expressly allows use variances, although I I recognize that this is a rare beast in the town of Cohasset. Um, I also acknowledge that the requirements for the grant of a variance are stringent. However, I suggest that PSI can satisfy its heavy burden here. And I'll I'll be as brief as possible. First, there are unique circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography, especially affecting the land, but not the zoning district generally. As I've described and and Dan will show you, um, uh, the unique physical conditions of this property have prevented meaningful development at the site for decades. However, self-storage works even given those site constraints. We can, as I mentioned, construct this project on that very steep slope. Uh, again, the project requires minimal parking and there will be minimal traffic impacts. Um, these conditions also do not generally exist within the district. And Dan was kind enough to provide its exhibit eleven to my letter and support the application in aerial image um, with GIS level property topographic information, which proves this out. This is purely, uh, purely a uh, a new, unique set of circumstances which drive uh, uh, drive the limitation on uses that can be made of the property. And again, as I mentioned, um, the onsite septic system can facilitate self-storage, but will not support other commercial uses, which, you know, may be allowed within the zoning district, but can't be placed on this site. So we conclude that the physical constraints make it economically and feasible to develop another viable use on this property, and therefore we satisfy the first prong of our variance standard. Uh, second, literal enforcement of the bylaws would involve substantial hardship. I I think this is obvious. I'm not going to dwell on this point. Um, I would add that the extent of identifiable hardship inherently involves a weighing of equitable considerations. So you consider the equities and consider hardship. And I think here, again, given everyone's good faith, all of the efforts to date, um, that the equities here weigh in favor of granting relief. Uh, I think everyone understood that this was going to be a permitted project but for the change in the the zoning bylaw. And third, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Again, uh, I'm repeating myself, but I I should do this for the record. Uh, self-storage was an allowed use within the original technology business district. And the planning board and the Conservation Commission granted approvals after extensive reviews, including third-party review of the project. As such, it's our position that these variances may be granted without derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Uh, and in fact, it's been suggested to us by others that a a variance is the best solution for this dilemma because it would specifically target the project site and not the larger district. Uh, the only other feasible alternative to address this problem would be to potentially go back to town meeting to amend the bylaw to allow self-storage within the new three A C zoning district. If that effort was successful, this would open up the entire zoning district to self-storage. Again, we're in the business, or I should say the clients in the business of self-storage. We like self-storage. Uh, there may be some uh, in town that don't think that they, that's an appropriate use within the entire zoning district, which is why the variance approach um, is targeted will only apply to this project and to this property. So um, I, that's a a a lot of information to digest. I was trying to simplify it by letters, it goes into more detail. But uh, unless you have questions for me, I'd like to turn it over to Dan, just to show you what we're talking about, please.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dan Ketches. I'm a civil engineer with VHB. I'll just provide you a brief overview of the site, some of the constraints and the proposed uh, design. I could share my screen briefly, uh. If you all see that.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
So this is the existing site. Um, as Adam mentioned, there's an existing cell tower use in the rear of the property. Um, it's fully previously disturbed and otherwise uh, currently undeveloped. There's significant topography on the site. As you can see, the the gray lines are the contours. There's about forty five feet of great change from the low point of King Street up to the rear of the property, so resulting in a pretty significant slope uh, throughout the site. Extensive geotechnical investigation was performed, uh, multiple rounds of borings and test pits. They showed high groundwater. Uh, largely soil is not suitable to infiltration or septic systems through much of the site. Um, and that informed the design and constrained where those those uh, pieces of infrastructure should, could go. The proposed site, as you can see here, has the proposed self-storage building. It'll have a single driveway serving the site, providing it access and egress um, to the building, to the parking, as well as a maintenance uh, access to the existing cell tower use that will remain on the site. Um, as you're probably familiar with, uh, this section of King Street is well-traveled, fairly have a heavy traffic volumes at times. As Adam mentioned, this this use is unique and it's extremely low number of vehicle trips generated compared to other types of uses of similar scale. And what that results in is a a lack of traffic impacts compared to, say, residential or office type of um development of a similar size. On a similar vein, the parking demand is quite low due to the nature of the use. Um, and so the the um, that allows us to provide the required parking based on the size of the building uh, within the site. The site will have uh, an exists, a comprehensive stormwater management system that's been designed in accordance with Mass D E P and Town of Cohasset standards. The existing site has no stormwater infrastructure at all. All runoff flows down the slope to King Street. Um, we do have our stormwater permit that's been issued by the Conservation Commission, and the design will preside a significant improvement in water quality treatment, reduction in peak runoff and volumes, uh, largely through the use of an infiltration basin located on the front of the site here. And that is in one of the areas of the site that, again, is suitable to providing infiltration. Similarly, uh, self-storage has an extremely low water demand and associated sewer generation. Um, the septic system, which is located al- also along the front of the site, has been sized for three hundred fifty gallons per day total, which is in line with typical single-family home. Uh, as I mentioned, the uh, a similar sized building of of different commercial or residential uses would require a much larger septic system, which, based on all of the site constraints, is not likely to be feasible on the site. And similarly, we do have our septic design approved through the Board of Health. Uh, so in summary, self-storage is uniquely suited to be feasible on the site. Um, it allows the layout to accommodate the required parking access as well as stormwater management and septic infrastructure all within the lot, working with the steep topography, uh, soil and groundwater constraints.
Are you moving the the curb cut from one end of the property to the other?
Uh, so we are proposing a new curb cut um, here, where you can see the existing access is right on the property line, on the adjacent property, which I understand that the town is um, firing or will be using. And so that that, the existing access is sort of shared through that driveway, so that will remain for the property next door. Um, that will not be used for the self-storage building any in the proposed condition, but and it will provide the separate access.
And has there been a traffic study on that?
Uh, yes, there was a a traffic study submitted for site plan review, and that was part of the peer review.
I understand the only building that's there now is the one for the cell tower. Is that right? Or is the old auto shop still there?
No, that that's correct. The, it's just the cell tower in the existing condition. Happy to answer any other questions. If not, I'll uh, turn it over to the applicant, uh, Jesse Morgan.
Good evening, Chairman, members, members of the board. Uh, thank you for your time this evening. Uh, I'm Jesse Morgan, Senior Vice President, Premier Storage Investors. Offices at five three zero Oak Court Drive, Memphis, Tennessee. Uh, I'll keep this brief. Obviously, Adam and Dan provided quite a bit of detail, but we're national cell stores developers. That's really all we do. Uh, one trick pony in that regard. Done over fifty developments across fourteen different states and have done quite a few in Massachusetts as well. Uh, we're very excited. We're very excited to move forward in the town of Cohasset this spring, but uh, as Adam and Dan have also detailed, you know, there's been some changes that ultimately require us to make another stop, and we feel that we've already engaged in a very lengthy uh, approval process that was collaborative and have always been appreciative of the comments we received from the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, uh, members of town staff. So we're looking forward to having those conversations with y'all as well and pushing this project forward and hoping for a similar positive result. So with that, open for questions, happy to answer anything y'all need and uh, you know, that's all I can say. So look forward to the process.
Adam, I, in the, maybe I'm missing something in the package, but I don't see any building elevations. I see a site plan.
Let me grab the package if I might. Thank you. What I was looking for is that the the traffic study was actually submitted with this application.
Oh, wait a minute. I forgot that I have this.
Listen. Listen.
Yeah, I made a quick note, David. It sounded like the elevation they noted was thirty-eight point three seven feet. Does that sound right?
That's the height, correct? Based off the town's calculation. If you're looking for the elevations as depicted, I believe they're appended to the back of the site plans ever provided. Is that correct?
I guess while we pull that up, if I could jump in, maybe one question would be, I mean, how critical is a thirty-eight point three seven? Height building versus a thirty-five foot building to your operation?
I would say, given where we are in plans, it would require us to go back and reconfigure and. Not necessarily start from scratch, but changes would have to be made to our building plans, but is it? Is it critical? And do I think I could find three point four feet? I think certainly that's something our team could huddle up on together and see if that opportunity is there for us, but. That possibility would be out there to revise the height if necessary.
Well, certainly it's a lot easier to have a conforming building than an unconforming thing. Let's just see.
I understand.
Your question, do you need direction to a particular plan? We did provide a full set of the site plans originally dated March fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Revised as of May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, which included a site plan with all of the elevations. And we supplemented that with an updated overall site plan. Which is revised as of December three, which updated the zoning table. To reflect the change from Technology Business to the three A C zoning district.
Can you, can you direct me to the page with the? The new table?
Oh, well, the new table, the separate sheet. That's, it's labeled overall site plan sheet C one. With the date of December three, twenty twenty-four, and so that should be a separate sheet.
It's not in the roll?
I don't know what you physically have, whether it was included in that roll or.
And I have this. So is it in this?
If you look at the back end of that package and see whether there's a folding plan.
That I've got, yep.
That by law may be sheet C one, which is the overall site plan.
Yep, here we go. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the applicant? Have anything to add?
I'll defer to the team. I don't think we have any additional information to present, but we're obviously prepared to answer any questions.
Okay, well, I have a couple of observations. And I, I think. I'm very sympathetic to your situation here. It's a very unusual kind of caught-in-the-middle sort of a thing. We can only decide things based on what our authority is to decide things. And, as you know, Adam, variances are not. Easy to get because of the law. And I think, you know, there's, there's some reason to believe that maybe town meeting didn't know exactly what they were doing when they made these changes. But we have to assume that the town knew exactly what they were doing. And that they meant to eliminate self-storage and they meant to eliminate the height of forty-five feet. Even though that may not be the case. If that's what the bylaw is, that's what we have to enforce. Given that, there are clearly criteria for variances. And you've set out an argument for those. You know, there are some pieces of this that I don't think, the fact that the applicant has spent a lot of money. Doing, developing the plans is not, for our purposes, an economic impact. You know, the question of whether there's. This is the, you know, really the only practical use for this lot. It's something that we have to think about. And, you know, I think your arguments are very well found, but it is a difficult lot. It's certainly, if anybody's ever tried to, and everybody does, drive through the area there with Duncan Donuts. Avalon and everything else, it's, it's a difficult. Area to have any kind of traffic in as well. So, you know, I am sympathetic to a lot of your arguments. I think that. There is a good argument to be made that this probably is the best use for that piece of land. But it doesn't comply with the bylaw. So, I mean, my feeling is I can be convinced, and not yet, but I can be. Other board members.
Yeah, Adam, are you aware of any case law, you know, that kind of shows? Maybe applicants that have, I'll call it two-thirds of a permit, you know, and then something changes that. Necessitates them to get a permit that they otherwise would not have had to seek?
There are cases which deal with use variances. I have not found a case with this unique set of circumstances.
Yeah, I mean, I brought up the height because I do think. You know, Dave touched on it a little bit. I don't know that there was an outcry against public storage per se, but. I do think that we could probably find stuff that indicates that there was a conscious effort to. Reduce height overall in that district from forty-five to thirty-five. I do kind of think that it would make it. More manageable if we weren't looking for a variance on the height. Because similarly, I think you laid out kind of the best case that you had for a variance, but there's a few pieces of it that don't maybe work. For me either, as far as like, just the total uniqueness of that topography and stuff to look at it and say. You have an existing use there right now, and you're going to keep that use there. So it obviously works for the parcel. To some degree to have a use there. And does that kind of compromise your economic piece of it as well? But I guess similar to Dave, you know, I do think that. Like self-storage is an appropriate use for that area if done the right way. So I'm not opposed to it, but obviously we'd have to find a way to, to get ourselves there. So I think. That's mostly all I had to add.
Woody? Yeah. My difficulty is not the merits of your position per se. But if I go back to the decision-making chain. Starting really with the zoning bylaw committee, not this board. But a committee that was charged with overhauling the zoning bylaws. The first step of that was a review by the retired Land Court Judge Cutler. And what emerged from her review, all I have to rely on is the printed. Document is that the district would be consolidated, height would be lowered, and the use would be eliminated. That was reviewed by the zoning bylaw committee, which endorsed that position. Which then went to the Planning Board and the Select Board, which endorsed that position. And it went to the town meeting, which also endorsed that. Whether that was given adequate scrutiny is quite another matter, but. Seven short months ago, the town meeting met and decided that. A right of a wrong, well-reasoned or ignorance is a different, is something I can't speculate on. But the town meeting ultimately decided that these other boards and individuals in the chain. Had decided to eliminate the use and reduce the height. And I. Am rather loath to override. The will of the town meeting, given the kind of scrutiny that had preceded this over a period of a year, year and a half. So I'm bothered by that. And the other issue, which is, I think, really subsidiary, but it. Is the economic argument. Yeah, I feel sorry for the applicant to have invested all this. Money, but it's, that's not the economic hurdle to my mind is. Which really should be, is the land or the site. Unable to provide any sort of reasonable use. Rather than an optimized economic return. But the bigger issue I have is that we have a, starting with the Chief Justice of the Land Court. Which advocated removing this use. And being endorsed or accepted by the. Board that she was advising, the zoning bylaw committee. Which was again advisory to the planning board, and the planning board agreed that this use should be eliminated. And the Board of Select, the Select Board agreed and Town Meeting agreed. And I've got a. It's not that if we had a clean slate, would we say this is a perfectly acceptable? Project. I don't know if that's what we're ruling on here or deciding on. I think what we're. Have got to consider is, should we? Are we empowered to override the will of the town meeting and all the boards that preceded it? I don't know. I'm not sure that.
Woody, I would add that, you know, I was on that zoning, you know, commission. With Tom and a few other folks, as you know. And I have no recollection that at any time when we were discussing this. That, that someone said, oh, well, you know, there's a project that's in the pipeline. And if we follow through with this, it's going to kind of put them left-footed. So I would say, you know, my recollection of the discussions at the zoning bylaw review commission. Was that the principles that were. You know, kind of pushed through and reflected in the changes, everybody was in favor of. But again, my recollection is, nobody at the time or during discussions was it ever raised? That there was an applicant with a project that would kind of be left in the lurch if followed through. And I do think that if that, if that knowledge had been present and that issue had been discussed. We probably would have tried to accommodate them. But again, you know, I'm not saying that my memory is perfect, but I certainly. I would know that, I'm pretty confident that if during our discussions, you know, it came up. And people focused on this type of a situation, I would remember that. And I don't think it ever did. So I think it's, you know, shame on the folks that were on the boards for not having perfect knowledge. But I do not think that it should be categorized as this was a thoughtful process. And what resulted was intended in all respects. I hear you.
I guess, John or Adam, can you help me? What do you, I don't quite understand the rule of. When a zoning bylaw is noticed for change? When does an application have to be filed in order to be valid under the, I guess, to be grandfathered under the old?
Yes, in order to have a zoning freeze, you must have your permit in hand. Prior to the first advertisement of the public hearing by the Planning Board to consider the warrant article.
You have to have your building.
Permit in hand, you know, prior to March twenty, which is both the date that we filed our application for site plan review. As well as the first notice of the public hearing of the Planning Board. And again, I'm very grateful for Mr. Dickey's recollection. I'm going to go back and see if I can get the minutes of the. Minutes of the zoning bylaw committee, but I can assure you that. The issue was not discussed in front of the Planning Board. And it was not discussed at town meetings since I personally reviewed those recordings with great care.
Dave, if I may ask one question, or Adam, if you don't mind. Was the, I know the site plan permit was applied for on March twentieth. How about the planning, the conservation stormwater permit? When was that applied for?
March twenty-nine.
All right. Was that what it was applied for or when the hearing was?
That was applied for, and let me give you the timetable again. The application for the stormwater permit was filed on March twenty-nine. And. Think it was granted on May twenty-three.
Okay, and just so the board knows, I mean, I, we, our conversation started regarding the. Permit in November of twenty-three, and you know, you guys, at that point. You know, directed to obtain a stormwater permit and a site plan review. And then, you know, so if that's helpful anyway, as far as the timeframe, but.
That was the start of our discussions. We had those discussions that all the way through, I think, was the end of January. As we went back and forth because we had some issues with respect, you may recall. Whether the lot was non-conforming because of a minor frontage deficiency and whatnot. So we were not in a position to submit our application until we had completed all of that work and was filed in the middle of March.
Yep, so, again, to let the board, we did meet both via phone and in person several times, starting in mid-November.
All right.
And Adam, did you say your review of both the advertisements and the? And Adam, did you say your rec- your review of both the advertisements and the um. Tapes were. Lacked promotion on. Both use and height or only use of self-storage?
Uh, I I I don't recall any conversation regarding building. I. Um, either in front of the planning board or town. Meeting, um, this is my best recollection. I've been candidly focused on the use issue. I'm I'm happy to provide the video or excerpts of the video or transcripts of. Now, the the uh discussion at town meeting was very short. Um, I did. Provide you an informal transcription of some of that in my uh letter in support. Um, as well as, you know, the the materials that were made available, you know, the the minutes. Uh, the informational summaries that were provided for town meeting. Um. And a- a- again, um. It it is, it is. Not clear that the consolidation of the zoning district was going to eliminate any uses, let alone self-storage. Or that there, I believe that uh that was going to result in a reduction in building height, but I I can't tell you with absolute certainty with respect to building height. As I've been focused mostly on the use issue.
So Adam, is it is it fair to say that? During the entire hearing process with the planning board? That no one brought up the fact that there was a zoning freeze for this particular project? That would affect this.
Zoning change, that that that's correct. In fact, we were asked to write a letter saying, hey, will you confirm that this isn't allowed? Use within the technology business district? And no one said, oh, by the way, Adam, you're wrong. Because there's a.
In fact, as of March twentieth, there was a zoning freeze. Because the notice had been published. Is that right?
No, no, there is no zoning freeze here at Chairman Morris because we would have had to have. Our permit. Uh, we would actually have to have a special permit in hand. Prior advertisement or a building permit.
So it was essentially, as of March twentieth, when that notice was published. Your project. Was. Unpermissible. Unless town meeting defeated the zoning change. Is that fair to say?
Correct. Because we would have had to have either a special permit or a building. Permit. But because it was an allowed use, all we needed was a site plan approval.
Mm-hmm, but there was. I guess what I'm trying to clarify is there was no mention by the planning board. That. This was in process and would affect this project.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure that was clear. Um, Lee, what do you think?
Immuted.
Um. I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thanks. Um, all right, if there's nothing further from the board of the applicant, let's see. Those who are. Viewing the meeting, if anyone has any input. Are there any questions? He has raised.
Not seeing any questions from the public.
All right. Um, so between now and next meeting. Hopefully we can get some supplements on the. Criteria for variance. And some clarification on the height. Issue. Um. Go from there.
Thank you. When is your next meeting, please?
Julia?
It's actually uh to be determined. We have a discussion item um on this agenda. Um. Whether we're going for the hybrid model or the remote model, if it's the remote model, it will be.
Yeah, I think we're going to stick with the remote until at least April, right?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm, but let me just check really quickly.
February fourth? Hmm, yeah.
On the remote model.
Yes, that is correct.
Submittal deadline is.
And the hybrid is February third, so probably February fourth, then I guess it sounds like.
Yep, February fourth. So any new materials a week before that? Give us all a chance to look at them.
You know, David, it might be useful, and Adam, um. To deal with the issue of um. In intent here, um, I'm, as I said, I'm I'm at this moment, at least. Rather loath to assume that I can uh gauge the intent. That went into both the bylaw change and the uh issuance of a permit. A special permit or or site plan permit by the. Planning board, but it's possible that the planning board assumed that it did not have the authority to. Um, issue a permit for a non-conforming or um. A disallowed use and height. And issued its permit. Knowing that it was a a small piece of a of a larger um. Of a larger puzzle. Um, I don't know, or maybe it was a the. Ignorance oversight or whatever, uh. Um, I I'm just reluctant to, at this point. Assume that we can deduce the um. Thinking of a of a board uh beyond what it literally did. In in the absence of minutes and. Statements, but if if you can help clarify, I I think uh. The dilemma we're in. I'm not, I'm not insensitive to the fact that. Um. It's sort of almost ironic that the planning board would issue a. Uh, permit at the same time that it was issuing a permit for a project that would be disallowed of. Based on a submittal. To town meeting, but.
Woody. Woody, would it be helpful for the um, maybe a copy of the submitted plans that might have um. The designation of zoning district height and other information on it, if if they did have that when they submitted it to the planning board? You also that.
I'm I'm sure it would be, John. Yeah, I think anything to kind of help us uh. Help us through this uh, did they know or did they not know?
So Mr. Tidick and Mr. I mean, we we provided you with actually the plans that we submitted to the planning board, which originally indicated. Technology business district and provided all of the dimensional requirements and how we satisfy those requirements. And then for purposes of this application. Um, we updated our overall site plan to show the change to the three A C. Zoning district, so that was all presented. And as I said, we were specifically tasked with writing a letter to verify during the. Planning board process. Um, that in fact, this was an allowed use within the technology district. I. Don't know why we would have been asked for that information. Um, if the planning board. Well, I I I I don't want, I'm not in any position to. Ascribe anything to what the planning board was thinking. Um, but uh from our perspective, we were permitting what we thought was an allowed. Use at the time and obviously. Uh, this has been a shock uh to find out after the fact that we have this difficulty.
Have you um. Heard from or talked to any of the abutters and neighbors?
Uh, we've never gotten any abutter. Comment that I can recall defer to. Uh, Jesse or any member of the team. Um, that was the nice thing about this this use. Is uh while we have Avalon behind us, there was no. A public comment from Avalon and and no public comment from the other. Uh, abutting commercial uses. So this is not an instance where. There was even a a whisper of opposition from the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm. Well. I think. Just so we can define our parameters here. I think you can assume that. We're sympathetic. That the equities break in your favor. But. We always have and will decide this based on the law. So we have very clear criteria under the variances. We will look at it, we'll look at all the. You know, the factors that we need to consider. And we'll go from there.
And we we understand and respect that I I did provide. Law in my letter in support.
Oh, yeah, that's that's one of the, did you come across any contrary authority?
Contrary authority?
Yeah, I know you said of the.
There there are cases, there are cases where use variances were denied. But they're all fact specific.
Uh-huh, okay.
And and un- unlike dimensional variances, you know, there are fewer use variance cases. Um. It's just the nature of the beast. I was desperately searching for a case that dealt with this. Unique set of circumstances where you literally have, you're in a permitting process and then there's a. A a potential change in bylaw that was not. Clear, certainly to the applicant. I'm not going to suggest that anyone else, um. You know, we we do our very best to stay abreast of developments in the town. And from the outside looking in. Um, the consolidation of these districts was simply advertised as a simple reorganization.
Mm-hmm. And that's, that's pretty clear. Lacked a lot of specificity.
I I mean, I and I I'm aware of other instances where. Applicants and boards have been surprised to find things either in the revised bylaw or out of the revised bylaw. Now. It was a rather uh large undertaking and I imagine. Uh, can anticipate, uh, I think as Mr. Dickey said, all of the consequences of of that large undertaking.
Right. Um, would you mind sending me a copy of the Deco Bomb case?
Uh, which case, I'm sorry?
Deco Bomb.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they want to add or ask? Discuss?
Hmm.
All right, well. All of the representatives for the applicants, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you all again. We'll uh we'll do our best to give you all the information you need and we certainly appreciate. Uh, your consideration in a unique process, so thank you for the time.
Yeah, and and just as an aside, if you can resolve that height issue, that make things. It would narrow the things that we have to think about.
No, I understand. We're going to do our, we're going to do our best and not only give you all the information you want, but also, you know, like we did with the planning board and the conservation commission, deliver. Deliver a project that the town boards are supportive of, which is ultimately what we want to do, so. We'll go ahead and put our heads down and see y'all in a month.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so. Need a motion? Actually, I need a designate to. To kind of quarterback this one. Any volunteers? All right, I'll do it. Actually. I'm going to be remote. So maybe not. All right. I'll do it. Um.
With great enthusiasm, I I sense, but.
All right, I'm uh I move that we continue this hearing into our February meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, Woody Tidick?
Aye.
Lee Dars?
Aye.
Mike Dickey?
Yes.
Dave McMorris, yeah, I and Matt Watkins.
Aye.
All right. So we're going to move on to deliberation of closed hearings and let's start with eighty-two border street.
Well, I could find, uh, this is Woody, I I could find nothing in the um. Draft decision that would give me pause other than um. Maybe we can make the phrase a little more specific uh on this and going forward to say rather than. Materials submitting submitted at the meeting. Um, introduce a a. A phrase uh most recently submitted or or whatever, um, because we've had a raft of. I mean, not that anybody is going to uh. You know, attempt to play. Uh, word games here, but um. You know, the understanding has always been that it's the most recently submitted, if you will, uh. Um, doc- set of documents that prevail. But that's a small point. But other than that, I I would um. Endorse the decision that that we've received.
Well, how does, how does everyone feel about putting a specific reference to thirty day? Transition?
The what?
Thirty day.
Thirty day transient piece.
Uh. Where. I don't mind, I guess, but I kind of hate to. Deal with things that are not before, you know. Not before us.
Well, it is sort of before us because the. The. The applications for transient transient use. And it's not defined in our bylaw, although it is defined in the building code.
Okay, just sort of raise that citation that.
Yeah, just say.
Defined, that's defined by.
Right.
Because the bylaw just kind of says you have to be a licensed hotel.
Right.
You know, if it doesn't. It's silent on the duration, and I think. I even as one that lives in the neighborhood, I think there's a little bit of chatter about. You know, could this? You know, as a bridge to bridge the gap, you know, could this be um something that you have, you know? Eight tenants. That rented for the full summer, uh, and then another group that comes in in the wintertime. Um.
You know, I I what I would like to see, and and I know I'm charged with it, but Matt, you or Dave might be better suited. Um, is it, is it a thirty day period, uh, and then you uh don't rent it for a day and then somebody. Picks it up again, or is it thirty days, John, in a year?
Uh, it it doesn't, it defines it as thirty. More consecutive days.
Consecutive days.
Yeah, but i- i- in order to. You know, keep in mind if someone's there for thirty days and, you know, it becomes very cumbersome because. Basically, everything has to come out, they can't go into the same unit. You start to get, you know, you have to use your judgment when you're inspecting these things, but uh, you know, the use is specific to that. Uh, as opposed to the use there and also uh. Some of the codes and inspections that go with it are different. There, so uh, for example, the. We we inspect the red line in annually, uh, Jack from the fire department and myself. And then he's also there quarterly, so there are. There are different safeguards. In place that kind of monitor whether people know it or not. Um. So I I I don't think. If they start running a business like that, word gets out. It's not. It's tough to hide that. In in my opinion, you know, you know. People can only hide that so long before it starts to get enforced. If they try to skirt.
Wondering if there was a loophole. That would have a a a series of thirty day rentals to the same person inner inner. Um, interspersed with, uh, let's say a week off or something.
Yeah, I I mean, I I I think that would, that would be by judgment on how that that uses. And and I I would weigh very heavily against that. Um, uh, so. And the same transient use works the other way too, you know, uh. You know, for condos, a lot of them don't allow transient use, uh, you know, so it has to be rented for so many days. Um. As a minimum, but uh here I think it I think it's pretty easy to enforce that.
Right. So do we want to? Add a reference to the. Building code or not?
That that I would, listening to the discussion, I think that's better than no mention whatsoever.
Yeah, I I would agree. I think uh some eyes on this and and uh folks in town are uh. Uh, pretty. Made their views on what they'd like to see pretty clear.
Uh pretty, made their views on what they'd like to see pretty clear. Yeah, I mean, I do think it makes, makes it tougher. For John, just on history, I think like. You know, I travel for work, I've stayed at hotels for months at a time and. Check, you know, ju- just on a checkout and a check in and. You know, like. I think. Yeah, it's it's it's, I think it would be tough for John to, I agree that it should be in there, but I'm acknowledging, I guess, that. You know, somebody could stay there for thirty days, leave, leave, leave on a Tuesday, book it again on a Wednesday and.
Yeah, in 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 which case, though, we could, we could say this is a uh. A a sham transfer, I mean, uh whatever, a sham rental or something, I don't know, but there must be some. That's a, that's a different issue, but you're right. I'd I'd rather see a reference to the building code, though, and.
I I do think it's fair to say that the town's small enough that if a whole bunch of folks start moving in for the winter. Um you know, folks, folks will. Yeah, but but folks will suss that out, you know?
It just follow up on that, Mike, I I do get phone calls quite often about. When things quite aren't happening as they should.
I bet you do. Bet you everybody in Town Hall gets uh gets uh gets calls.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess the other side of the coin is, you know, if somebody wants to put up a. An in-law for two months over the summertime. You know? That's quiet there living, is that a problem?
He's gonna care.
Be nice to your neighbor. Well, um. So do we have a motion on the floor uh with with the? My very small edit and and the other reference, which is more more um substantive in terms of reference. The tr- uh transit. As defined by the building code.
Yeah, I'm good with that, otherwise I. Looks, I didn't have anything that I thought should be added or subtracted, I thought the decision looked good.
I agree. Alright, so.
I'll I'll make a motion to um approve the 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 decision with the two suggested edits.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Woody Chittick?
Aye.
Lee Darst?
Aye.
Mike Dickey?
Aye.
Dave McMorris?
Aye.
Matt Watkins?
Aye.
Charlie's not here. He wasn't here for tonight's meeting and I don't think he can do a. Or make up on this because we closed the hearing. So we're gonna need somebody to be one of the three. Four members, I would suggest Woody since he did quarterback the whole thing.
Second.
Everyone agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is. One forty-seven South Main Street.
You've made a motion, I mean, any discussion on that motion?
On which motion?
Oh, oh, I thought a motion, I, well, I I'll make a motion to. Uh prove. The modification and use of special permit at one forty-seven South Main Street and then open it up to the board for discussion before we. Proceed to a second and and vote.
I thought it was. Well written in the conditions that. The applicant was fine with, were fine with, I think they protect. The neighbors and the neighborhood.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty clear that it's, you know, for. Candle making and the retail associated with it. I guess, doing that, the only reason I brought up like a future use if it didn't work out with them is the original application, I think it's showing like. Light retail, which was a little bit vague, you know, and I didn't want if that tenant. You know, leaves a year from now for them to put somebody else in there and say, well, it's still light retail, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, is it clear in the, I have to look at the draft, is it clear that the light retail is related only to?
It's pretty clear and it's clear in the decision that it's, it's very focused on kind of the. Candle making and kind of the. Yeah, it's pretty unique, I think, and and that that, it just, the only thing it doesn't say is, you know. If there's a turnover in tenants. You know? I don't know if we would wanna be. Notified, consulted, or.
Actually, that's a good question, if, let's say. He found some, some professional tenants. Can he just go back to the original special permit or does he have to come back to us because he had a modification?
Yeah, I would think that, well, yeah, a good question, but I would think he'd be able to go back because it says that the new one doesn't supersede any. Thing really, first, you know?
But but I I think anybody new, Dave, who isn't gonna be on that the closing hours of seven o'clock at night or. Maybe uh uh more more traffic, uh. We would certainly wanna review it.
Right. I think unless it goes back to what the original special permit was, or. If this business. Leaves, then they gotta come back.
Yeah, I think it be, could be done expeditiously, I don't think they need to jump through a huge number of hoops, but.
Right. Alright. Um I'll second Woody's motion. Any more discussion? Alright. All those in favor, Woody Chittick?
Aye.
Lee Darst?
She's recused.
Oh, that's right. Mike Dickey?
Yay.
Dave McMorris, I am Matt Watkins.
Aye.
Alright, and we do need a third on this one as well. Um looks like Mike's volunteering.
What 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 do I need to do?
We 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 have to have three official votes, three member votes on the decisions, the way they're being drafted.
Okay.
So. Charlie's not here.
Yeah.
Um Lee's recused. Woody's already been expended. So you're you're it.
Okay, uh that that what 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 additional responsibilities does that entail?
You have to stop by Julia's office and sign it sometime in the.
Ah, okay.
Or give her permission to use your sig- use your backsimly signature.
Even better.
Yeah.
You'd actually have to stop by the office because I don't have a signature stamp for you, so I can't. Actually sign your name, so if you could stop by the office, that would be great.
Alright, alright, uh keep keep on me on that uh Julia, please.
Okay, yeah, so it's just um fourteen days after today, so within the next two weeks.
Alright.
Dave, while you're by there too, we could probably have a stamp made up for you too, at the same time for the future, if that's helpful.
It's okay.
Okay.
Alright, so.
My 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 signature is a scrawl, so. I don't know, might might not work with the stamp technology.
So next we have our uh meeting minutes of December third.
No, don't we, have we, oh yeah, I'm sorry, have we continued one forty-nine King?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Summer third minutes.
I thought they looked fine.
Yeah.
I did too. I read them. Today.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes as drafted.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, Woody Chittick?
Aye.
Lee Darst?
Aye.
Mike Dickey?
Aye.
Dave McMorris?
I, Matt Watkins.
Aye.
Alright. Next draft memo to the Conservation Commission about our concerns on the Black Horse Lane dock. Do we have a draft decision or draft letter, draft memo? I don't see it.
So I believe it was discussed last meeting, um that one of the members was gonna be drafting it.
Oh, that's right, was that me?
It may have been.
I hope it wasn't me, I don't.
Yeah, 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 I hope it wasn't me.
Hmm, alright. Somebody's gonna have to look back at our minutes of December third and see what is.
Julia, is that something you could do or or check in with Carolyn? To make sure that it meets the. Proper form and. We could deal with it next month, I suppose.
Yeah.
Yes, um I. On aside, I have spoken to Charlotte who, um I I believe. Ninety-four Black Horse Lane is going before the Conservation Commission. Um within the next week, I don't know exactly which day. Um so she is aware that we will be sending a letter, um but I can. As you saw at the previous meeting, we had approval from. Town Council. Giving the go ahead to review and vote on the. Draft memo, but I can draft the memo if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the overall feedback was essentially, we ruled within the limits of our jurisdiction, but there was participation at the meeting that. Um raised concerns of the overall placement of the. Float and the other kind of impacts that were described and that we wanted them to be aware of it. In their consideration.
Floration of these enormous docks or long stretches of salt marsh.
Okay.
Particularly in developments where community docks could be an option.
Okay.
Alright, um.
Yeah, I don't know, if Dave, if you're traveling at all or anything, Julia, I don't know if you. When you drafted, the meeting's coming up quick. If you wanted to put me on it as well, I.
Please, I'm I'm leaving Thursday and I'm gonna be on the road for a week.
Yes, I will include you, Matt.
Great. Meeting schedules. We have uh two choices, the remote model and the hybrid model. I would suggest that we. Vote to follow the remote model through. At least our April first meeting and at the April first meeting decide. Whether we wanna move to a hybrid and what days we wanna do that.
Yes.
I'll move that that's what we do. Is it second?
Seconded.
Alright, Woody?
Aye.
Lee?
Um, yes.
Mike?
Aye.
Me, I, Matt?
Aye.
Um so the last item is correspondence to the ZBA, we have a a letter. Which came to us, but is is um. Recently directed to John. Since this would be his bailiff in the first instance.
And we got one previously, maybe three months ago.
Which are you, what are you, uh topic or date?
This, this is a sign for the new Stoked Restaurant.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the one that just came in, it was in our packet.
Yep, that's the one.
Oh, when you said three months ago, I didn't, I got a little.
Well, because it's the second time we've seen it, though, so we did get one, but I think we just discussed it, that's why I was wondering now do we? Like, do we have to take action? We discussed it before, uh but didn't, didn't I guess say, hey, you know? We need to.
Well, I guess the question is to John, what's going on, John?
Uh well, two, one one was anonymous, so sometimes I reluctantly do those, uh secondly, the. The sign that is up there has been up for years. Um if not. Decades, and so what they had done, they just put a clause sign over the existing lit sign. Um I think that's what they they're referring to, if I'm not mistaken, as you pull into uh Sawyer Street, you see it. I think that's the sign they're referring to.
There's another smaller wooden sign out front.
There's one on the marquee of uh that has the other signs listed, you know, with it. That's a permanent sign. And then they have a sign on the building.
And as you go down King Street toward. Sawyer, there's another sign out on the lawn there. For Stoked.
Yeah, so they sh- I think there's. Three signs in total, one on the building and two on the road, is that correct?
One in the uh directory, uh isn't it, but.
Right. But it's, I guess. The, the pre-existing sign was an illegal sign. According to our bylaw, isn't it?
Right, and that's the one that has been there.
Well, I don't, I don't think the sign itself is is uh. Uh grandfather. Originally, I go back to Barbara Power days on the zoning board. And this sign bothered her a lot, it was originally put there to direct uh people. On the highway to go downtown to the village fair, to uh Farmer's Market, et cetera, it was a civic. Uh activity uh sign and somehow Feng Shui. Kind of uh took that over and um by the time it was. You know, really became an issue, it had been there. Long or too long, but. I believe the law does not allow uh one illegal sign to be grant, you know, to be used. For another uh. Purpose. Endeavor.
John, is this the sign that's on the corner, basically faces up to the corner?
Yes, I think that's the one that.
Cause there's another one, there's another Stoke sign, as you go. After you go past, if you're coming from Sawyer Street and going toward.
South.
Okay, there's the one on the corner. Then there's like like a for rent sign. And then there's a Stoke sign. And then there's the marquee.
They are allowed, I don't know what the Stoke sign is on three A, but you would be allowed to have, like, say that's like a coming soon sign. They would probably be allowed to have that for, what is it, John, like a, up to a sixty day duration?
Yes, cause. I believe they look, looking to open on January fourteenth, uh so I go down tomorrow. And kind of look it up, and one I have. Again clarity on the. Removal of the. King or the sign on the corner of King Street, then I will look at the other, the marquee and the other. Standalone one.
So they may have two illegal signs, you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah, the only thing I'm wondering is the one, you know, is the one that's on King Street. And I can't picture it, but it might be, I I thought I saw something that said like. More more temporary, because you can put out like a temporary sign. Like, you know?
Yeah, the one on King Street is a uh almost like a flag over an existing sign saying. Coming soon type thing, I think it is.
Or hiring, they had the sign, they had a sign that they were hiring.
Yeah, you mean on Sawyer Street, John, right?
Right, that's the one on Sawyer.
The one on, the one on King Street, I think, one of the ones, I think, said that they were hiring.
Yeah. I know when we discussed it last, we were kinda like, we, I think we netted on, or we landed on. Well, it's a new ownership, the sign was illegal to begin with, so we probably should inform them that they can't use it.
Alright, and and I I'll probably have to instruct. Cause I don't know what's underneath their banner, it might be the old Feng Shui sign, so we'll have to in- instruct. Remove that one.
I I think it should come down or be reserved, you know, as they say, its original purpose, we don't have to get into it now, but but it was really. Put up by the town to advertise village act, you know, village events. And it was so, it was episodic.
But now people put those little stick-in signs, like for the farmer's market and.
Yeah, I know.
The art show, they just put the stick-in signs up temporarily.
That that sign should probably come down, it's it's just, I I would hate to to perpetuate that and then have. That, that sign should probably come down, it's, it's just, I, I would hate to, to perpetuate that and then have. Some other piece of property, uh, you know, and in their intersection saying. That they, they can do this because it's been granted elsewhere. We've got enough signs going on.
Yep.
Uh, I'll swing by tomorrow then, they've been pretty responsive on other stuff, so I'm sure this will. Take care of it.
Then there's another Chinese takeout going in, like, in between there and.
Yes, I think that's down towards where the, um.
Nail salon is, I think.
Yeah, and, and that building, the first foot units are. Lettered alphabetically, so it's a little more difficult, I wish they were numbered, uh, but that's, uh. The Feng Shui or the, uh, Stoke pizzas would be A, so probably down around E.
Yeah.
Uh, area, there's another Chinese restaurant going in.
And now is that seated or takeout or?
I think it's, uh, both.
I think it's the, the former Feng Shui cook.
Yes, I think it might be the son or the cook or a rela- certainly a relative.
And it's, I think their constant, their focus is gonna be on takeout, but there's also gonna be some eating. I'm getting that straight from the very authoritative Cohasset one four three.
Well, that might help the golf tavern, if you people want to go over there with the two.
All right, um.
Yeah, so it's like, in the past, we had to take like a, a motion for enforcement or whatever, I don't, I don't really see this sign as that, but I mean, I don't know, do we? Do we have to?
Yeah, maybe what I could do is update you at the next meeting, it's really, maybe drop to you a little note, um, just to let you know the status going forward.
But if they were gonna make that a permanent sign and repaint it, wouldn't they have to apply for signage?
Yes.
They would, they would need, I think, a variance because they're already at the, will be at the max. For, for allowed signs.
Right, and, uh, as I say, well, I, I just want to double-check the locations of the two signs tomorrow when I go by. The, the, the Kings, the corner sign on King and Sawyer is, is gonna be removed, so I'm not, it's the.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's good.
Yeah, I'm sure the pile on, pile on one's fine, and I think that there's some sort of a rule, right, that you can put out a temporary sign for up to sixty days.
I think you're right, um, for hiring or coming soon or open house type things that we see around.
Yeah, right. So. Anything else?
Um, also, just, uh, there is a. Message dropped in the Q and A, it was at eight forty-six from, um, an attendee just under George. And they mentioned that Concom on ninety-four Black Horse Lane is January ninth. Yeah. That's quick.
Okay. Very good, um. I will be traveling for the next week or so, and then I will be doing both probably the February and March meetings remotely. So I won't be able to pick up my packet, but. Anything that needs to be handled with a large roll of plans is gonna have to be handled by somebody else.
Well, yeah, those large rolls are.
Might break the new compact or the dump if we get to.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to having eighty-two border street go to my recycling bin here. Okay, um, if anybody has nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, second?
Seconded.
All in favor, Woody Chittick?
Aye.
Lee Darst?
Aye.
Mike Dickey?
Aye.
Dave McMorris?
Aye.
Matt Watkins?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Safe journeys.
Thanks.
Have a good night. Good night. Good night.
Good night.